Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
So we will call the meeting to order for Thursday, June 27th, the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners Bonk.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Salfeld.
Sparks.
Present.
Melton.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Tallon.
Here.
Wolkowski.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Woodin.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, if my math is correct, you have 17 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll call Commissioner Breevy for our invocation.
Thank you, Chair. Will you all bow your heads with me, please? Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day today. Thank you for the sunshine after such a long winter and spring. Thank you so much for this weather that we can enjoy. And thank you for each person here today. Thank you for blessing them with gifts and talents to serve our community. And please be with us as we have discussions, guide our discussions, and help us to listen to each other and listen to our constituents. Please allow us to honor you in everything that we do, Lord. And again, thank you for the time that we get to spend together and the time that we get to serve our communities. In your name, amen.
Amen. At the point of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are on to item 5, Special Order of Business. I'll call up Mr. Jerry Miller from the Kent Conservation District for our first Special Order of Business.
Good morning, and thank you for providing Kent Conservation District an opportunity to share our annual update with you. On your table, you have a copy of our annual report, a front and back, one pager. I'm not going to go through that. I just share that as a reminder, I'm Jerry Miller. I'm the Chair of the Kent Conservation District. I'm one of the five elected board members for the district. Our other board members and associate members are listed there on the upper left. And then our staff, and you'll hear from two of our staff today. I won't go through the annual report. I just want to make a couple comments. On the front side, we talk about the Michigan Agriculture and Environmental Insurance Program. We brought on a new technician last August, and he came from the private sector. He'd been working with an agronomic company and working with farmers in agronomy. And so he came on. And I just want to give you some updating numbers. This Bill Lindberg is the individual, and he's done an outstanding job. As you see there, the numbers at the end of 2018. Well, I can update that now that we have 48 farms in the county that are MEEP verified, and we have over 102 that have individual systems that have been verified. So Bill's doing a great job. The other comment I want to make on the front side, we had our annual meeting in March, and Administrator Britt came and made opening comments, and we thank him for that. And then also, we had four of you that came, Commissioners Breevy, Hennessy, Melton, and Woodin, and we want to thank them for being there for our annual meeting. And we look forward to at our 2020 annual meeting to have many more of you come to our meeting. On the other comment I'll make on the backside of the report, you see our revenue summary for last year. And I just want to comment that we are fiscally sound. We do a bi-annual audit, and we just received our audit report in April, and we're financially sound. But I want to make the other comment, as I show on this slide, there are 75 conservation districts across the state, and they cover all 83 counties. So there's a conservation district covering all 83 counties. We're working with the Michigan Association of Counties with the legislature for funding, and that's in progress. Senator Victory is leading that effort force from the Senate. You know Senator Victory from Hudsonville. And I want to acknowledge Commissioner Stan Ponston, who is a board member. If you're not aware of that, he's a board member from the Michigan Association of Counties. So Commissioner, thank you for your support with the MAC and support for us. So with that, I'd like to introduce Jessie Schulte. She's our manager, and she's going to give you a short update on invasive species. And she'll be followed by Katie Derosha, and she's going to give you some update on the Regional Conservation Partnership Program that Grand Valley Metro Council is leading. But we're one of the major partners working with farmers in the Rogue and Indian Mill Creek. So Jessie?
All right. As you know, invasive species continue to be an emerging issue, and we're excited. Right now, our strike team is out treating invasives as we speak, Japanese knotweed. We treated over 900 sites since 2016, and it's actually since 2018, we provided over $120,000 worth of treatments to the Kent County parks and our roadways and our townships. So we're really proud of that. Here's a snapshot of just some of the treatments that we've provided. Not only are we doing invasive species work, but the Kent Conservation District actually assists the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service in implementing farm bill programs, as you'll hear about today. We actually assist the Michigan Department of Agricultural and Rural Development with a MEEP program, as you heard about from Jerry Miller. We also assist the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to implement watershed and water quality programs. And we're excited that we were selected for a grant. So we're bringing more dollars to Kent County to provide water quality protection. And then Michigan Department of Natural Resources to implement plant, wildlife, and habitat programs. So our invasive species program is funded in part through the DNR. So we're working with all these organizations, state and federal, to bring dollars to Kent County, to make sure that we're protecting property values and ecological systems. Thank you. So now I'm going to introduce Katie Derosha, our wonderful soil conservationist, who's going to provide an update on our CPP.
Good morning. So I'd like to discuss how we're protecting the soil and water in Kent County by installing on-the-ground conservation practices for private landowners and operators. So the Regional Conservation Partnership Program is a federal program through the Natural Resources Conservation Service. This program has committed $2.8 million for private landowners in two watersheds within Kent County. This program is going to implement conservation practices to address agricultural non-point source pollution to surface water. Kent Conservation District is a lead partner assisting NRCS with these on-the-ground implementation of conservation practices. Right now, we're in our second year of a five-year program. So on your screens, we have a visual representation of the two watersheds. The first is the Rogue River watershed. It is made up of several subwatersheds in the northern part of Kent County, and then the Indian Mill Creek watershed, a little bit north of Grand Rapid City. So the resource concerns that this program is trying to address are water quality, soil quality, and habitat. As you can see in the pictures, soil erosion is a very serious issue in these watersheds. Sedimentation and nutrients in a coli are affecting our water quality. And of special interest is cold water fisheries in both of these watersheds. So as of June of 2019, we have assisted, excuse me, we have contacted 500 landowners within Kent County. We've assisted 29 landowners, and over 874 acres have been enrolled, and we have spent I'm going to give a quick overview of some of the practices that farmers and private landowners are implementing. So we have cover crops to protect the soil, residue and tillage manage, graze stabilization structures, stream bank stabilization, stream buffers in riparian zones, stream crossings to prevent cattle from having direct access to surface water, tree and shrub establishment to improve habitat. And of particular interest to many private landowners is pollinear habitat to improve habitat and food for butterflies, moths, bees, you name it. So why are private landowners interested in adopting conservation practices? Well, if you look on your screen, do you see that one large bag of soil? One bag equals one ton of soil. So when you have erosion, you're losing fertilizers, soil, and money. One ton is losing about two pounds of nitrogen and one pound of phosphorus into surface water. So if you look at the dump truck, you're losing about 10 tons of soil erosion a year through soil erosion, water erosion, sedimentation, you name it. So if a landowner is implementing conservation practices, they're saving about $750 for every 40 acres of conservation practices implemented. So in summary, if a landowner adopts conservation practices, they're saving about $18 per acre in fertilizer value, about $42 per acre for water quality value, and about $7 per acre for soil value. By implementing these conservation practices, they're saving overall about $67 per acre. So it really pays for private landowners to enroll in conservation practices. In summary, Kent Conservation District is implementing a broad range of projects by protecting and enhancing soil, water, and plant resources in Kent County. We're leveraging contracts and grants to implement these on-the-ground practices without appropriated funds. So if you have anybody that would be interested in adopting conservation practices, you can locate us at the Kent Conservation District. We have our contact information via email and by phone. And does anyone have any questions at this time?
I'm sure we will. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was just curious, recently in the paper, I was reading, they're questioning how some of the bio solids that we're applying, especially up in the area that our representatives. This has been a pretty common practice over the last decade. I was wondering where you guys are on in that process? Are you part of that process of determining what's going on?
So if a landowner works with us and they would like to implement bio solids, we would provide them a nutrient management plan that follows Michigan State University MSU Extension recommendations. So there are many guidelines that we provide to landowners to implement bio solids in a safe manner. So basically, we provide them the technical assistance to help them implement that MEEP state and federal regulations.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Wanted to thank you for all your work sitting on the MAC board. What Kent County is able to do and leverage compared to some counties is remarkable. It's my ask off to you folks there. My question is more towards the MEEP program. I know it's very hard for a farm to get that certification. How do we compare against the other 83 counties on the farms were able to get into that program?
Our technician, Bill Lindberg, has gone above and beyond the call of duty to work with local landowners. He has gotten quite a few farms MEEP verified. There are several systems that you can be verified in. Farmstead, so the headquarters where the barns and the shops are, that's usually the most difficult to get verified. Others, such as cropping or orchard systems, those tend to get verified more. Bill has been working very hard with our Board Director Jerry Miller to do more outreach for farmers, and we have quite a few landowners in our system that are on the way to become MEEP verified, and they're fairly large landowners. So in comparison to other counties within the state, we're gaining in numbers quite rapidly.
So I can just add, Commissioner, we were not above average until we brought Bill on. And so, as I indicated, he's made some tremendous strides. So I anticipate that he will, and Kent Conservation District will be recognized this year when M-DAR, Commission Department, their staff provides incentive grants. We anticipate we'll get an incentive grant because of Bill's work this year. Historically, we have not been above average.
Okay. And I appreciate that, because money for conservation districts is not a priority in Lansing. You had mentioned that MAC has worked to try to change that. If you live above the knuckle, even those dollars are more important. So I, like I said, I appreciate all you've done with what little resources you folks have. And I know it's tough to live and die by grant funding.
Thank you for your comment, yes.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. One of the issues that I hear about frequently is really the farmer's fertilization that leaches over into adjacent, either lakes or rivers, and the contamination that that creates. What's the, what are the revenues, or what are the avenues that you have available to you to deal with that? I mean, it strikes me that that's got legal implications for letting that contamination or that pollution to leach over. What are the recourse that you use?
So is your question, what is the Kent Conservation doing to help alleviate that issue?
Yeah, and are there other resources or other recourse or other initiatives to do that, other than just private litigation?
Some of the things that Kent Conservation does, coupled with M-DAR, so the Department of Ag and Rural Development, is we're having our MEEP technicians, so Bill Lindberg, on the ground, helping farmers become environmentally compliant. We provide them nutrient management plans, and through our field office, that means we have to meet Michigan State University Extension recommendations. So we're providing them nutrient management plans so that they know how to apply. They do soil testing. So soil testing shows how much phosphorus, potassium, and nitrogen are in their soils. By using soil testing, they're applying fertilizers at an appropriate rate. We're providing them technical assistance to put in field borders, filtration strips along surface water, to help them harvest their crops in a timely manner, basically applying fertilizers to meet their crop needs, that they're not overapplying it, and basically giving them assistance and giving them resources that they can read and implement on their farm, so that they know they're in compliance with state and federal regulations. Soil testing, fertilizer recommendations, practices to help them alleviate any wind erosion, soil erosion, sediment loss.
So it's good citizenship, and it makes sense, and it's wise. Other than that, is there, can you compel them to do this?
I might defer to Jerry on that. He's dealt with that in many different states.
I think the answer is our programs are volunteer. We work with USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service implementing farm bill programs. They have nutrient standards. Again, they follow the state land grant university recommendation, state by state. So all of our programs are volunteer programs, but the issue that you're addressing is, by being MEEP verified, you also, the farmer then falls under the Right to Farm Act and so on and so forth that the state has. So it's a voluntary effort. We do not, we're not in the regulation business. I think that's the answer. If I, if I'm addressing your question.
No, I understand. I just, and I know the Right to Farm Act has its limits, and you can't just pollute your neighbor's properties. And whether there are other initiatives that are more forceful and compelling compliance with these, other than just private action?
Well, there may be, and I'm sorry I don't have the direct answer, but in terms of off-site erosion and sedimentation, then you may, a farmer may have, be potentially litigated against. And so obviously, phosphorus attached, is attached to soil particles, and addressing the phosphorus issue in terms of off-site erosion.
Well, thank you.
Also, the great news is that the DEQ does test different watersheds every five years. The Rogue River watershed was just tested in the last five years. We incorporated this into a $200,000 grant and just got approval for it. So we actually know some of the farms that we consider they could be in violation, but we keep it confidential, because we're building trust with these landowners. And in this $200,000 grant, we put in 53,000 of cost share funds to help them implement conservation practices that we believe will help address those water quality issues. But we don't want them to think of us as the DEQ. We want them to think of us as their support system.
Yep. All right, Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. My question, and I've asked it before, but, and it might actually be coming under our next ones, the MSU annual report, but the invasive species that you mentioned, and I know that this is something that comes up. I have a friend who's a master gardener, and she comes to our, I live in an area that has some acreage among all the homes, and she just goes, "Oh, my gosh, over there is invasive species, and over there is invasive species." And I don't want to make it say like we don't take her seriously. Of course we do. We respect her. What recourse would someone have? And I know in Kentwood, there's a beautiful farm that is soon to go up for sale. It just breaks my heart. We knew it was coming. And I'm guessing that they probably have some of the same problems. So how would that be addressed? Without being a farm?
Yeah, so we've got two ways to address invasive species. What we're doing is we're actually prioritizing our treatments and species. So we're going after early detection species. So someone that's a master naturalist might be able to identify hundreds of different invasives, but we've got top four invaders that are funded through the state. And then we are also selecting the areas that we are doing treatment. So we actually selected the Kent County parks as one of our prioritized areas. And then in addition, we have a for-hire program that helps subsidize our invasive species strike team, so folks can hire us to go out to their farms. And if you noticed on that map of all of our treatments, just a snapshot of all the sites, the 400 sites we treated last year, some of those were actually up in large farm fields. So invasive Japanese knotweed was wrapping around old barns that could crack the foundation of the barns, and we were able to do treatments with cost share.
But we're, I mean, again, if you're not a farm, over 40 acres, though, what would we call you or?
Yeah, you can, you can call kentconservation.org, and we have a webpage called Invasives Action Kent. And we have a phone number where you can hire us for hire, or we have cost share depending on the species.
Okay, great.
So yeah, we do offer that service, which, you know, there's few organizations that do offer that service. We're also training other landscape, you know, providers to make sure that they know how to properly treat invasives. That's a great question.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for your work. I want to recognize how important it is to, interestingly enough, the GR Forward Plan for downtown Grand Rapids and the associated restoration of the rapids on the Grand River. If the river pollution upriver isn't solved, that is a problem for downtown Grand Rapids and the recreational uses that we're planning there. Want to ask a question about your collaboration or coordination of work with the Lower Grand River Organization of Watersheds, ALGRO. Could you talk about that just briefly?
So through the RCPP program, there are 22 different partners. ALGRO is one of them. We work very closely with ALGRO to do quite a few things.
Yeah, actually, Wendy is a partner with us, and she helped us write the Environment and Great Lakes and Energy Grant that we just secured. So that $200,000 grant, she was very instrumental in helping us secure that. So we actively have, maybe every other month, we have a meeting with ALGRO, and we're working on several projects. We have a program called Seasons on the Farm, where we're educating students up in Sparta and Rockford about some of these conservation practices, so the students can learn about it. So yeah, they're a wonderful partner.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate all your work. Very important. All right, we are on to item 5B, MSU Extension Annual Update, and I'll call on Erin Moore. Welcome this morning.
Good morning, Chair Bolter and Commissioners. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Erin Moore. I'm the District Director for MSU Extension. So first, thank you so much for being so welcoming this first year that I've been in this position. It has been a learning curve, for sure, to learn everything that MSU Extension does. But I'm excited to present to you the annual report for 2018. So I already got my first question today. Am I going to talk about industrial hemp today? Because that is about 2019, that's actually going to be for our next year's report, but I did want to make a quick mention that we are hosting a webinar series starting in July and August, for those who did want to learn about that. It's a new policy. Just to be very clear, we don't work with marijuana, but we do work with industrial hemp, and we are trying to learn that policy and disseminate that information out. So and just to respond to some of the questions that came up in the report from the Conservation District, we, I did bring our water programs menu, so I'm going to leave that here. Any of the questions that came up during Jerry's presentation could be answered by the programs that we offer there. That would be wonderful, and I brought some extra copies of that, too. So just to give a snapshot, I have 10 minutes to talk to you about everything that MSU Extension does. The number one question, or thing that I hear when I talk to our partners is, "I didn't know that MSU Extension did that." So I have 10 minutes, and I can only give you some program highlights, but just wanted to let you know that if you have that hard copy report, I'm happy to answer questions offline or, you know, after today's report. So our, what we're best known for is our support of agriculture, but that's certainly not all that we do. So in 2018, we reached over 1,500 people in the apple industry. And we do that through a few different ways. One is with individual stakeholder, sorry, consultations. We do it with educational sessions on pests, diseases, and weather outlooks. So we have an apple educator that wakes up every Wednesday morning and educates growers on what to do. So we were really surprised and happy to learn that our extension educator received the National Apple Grower of the Year Award. His name is Phil Schwaller, and he owns Country Basket up in Alpine. So another very cool thing that we do is community food systems. So here with me today, I brought Garrett Ziegler, who's going to talk a little bit about the programs that we do there.
All right. Thank you, Erin. Happy to be here to talk to you a little bit more about the work that I do, specifically in the realm of community food systems. And again, as Erin said, she's just giving a snapshot of the extension work that we do, so I'll just be giving a kind of a small snapshot of the actual local food and community food systems work that we do with an extension here in Kent County. So just a quick question. Are people on the board here familiar with community-supported agriculture or CSAs? Yeah, a few people, maybe members of a CSA farm yourselves? So Extension has been working for about six years now with many of the local farmers in Kent County that have CSA programs. So community-supported agriculture is a direct marketing method by which local farmers sell shares of their farms to local residents, to the community. So it's really about community buying into a farm, sharing the risk of the growing season for that farm. So basically, once you buy into the farm and the share, each week throughout the growing season, usually 20 to 22 weeks, about early June through October, you get a share or a... 20 to 22 weeks, about early June through October, you get a share or a basket, a case, a crate of everything that's fresh on that farm during that week. So, it's really the best way to buy local food and support your local farms. So, when you buy a CSA share, you know that all of that money that you're spending on that CSA share is going directly to that farmer and to support their family and their farm. So, one of the ways that we support local CSA farmers is through an annual event that we host every year called the Growers Fair. This is an event where we bring out between 15 and 20 local farmers that have CSA programs. We allow them to set up booths at the downtown market. So, we have an office at the downtown market, and we partner with them to allow us to provide the space to do that event. And it's usually in March, one of the weekends in March every year. And the farms come, they set up their booths, we open the space to the public, and you can come in and meet with a farmer, talk to them, find out about what a CSA is, how the system works, and really get the truce, if you're interested in buying a CSA, the CSA farm that really works the best for you and for your family. So, we set up a map where we show where all the farms are located across the county and the region. So, it's nice for people to be able to say, "I'm, you know, supporting a farm that's either right down the street from me or right down the road." We do have farms that are actually located within the city limits of Grand Rapids, so people really enjoy being able to support those farmers that are in their neighborhoods. We also work really closely to support CSA farmers through an organization called the West Michigan Growers Group. And this is a nonprofit that Extension has partnered with over the last six years and really helped to build the capacity of to organize into their own nonprofit. And it's really a farmer-led, farmer-organized organization that's really all about supporting small farmers in Kent County and in West Michigan. And as part of that work, we organize monthly farm tours where farmers can gather on their farms, learn about how, you know, what the different growing practices they're implementing around different crops, and really just kind of build community amongst themselves. It's really, really hard, as I'm sure you're all aware, to be a farmer, especially a small diversified vegetable farmer. So, you know, they really all see the value and the benefit of being able to organize, being able to get to know each other, and kind of commiserate with, you know, the trials and tribulations of being a local small-scale farmer. Another aspect of our community food systems work that I wanted to share with you today is our work to establish a Kent County Food Policy Council. So, Extension has been working with several organizations in Grand Rapids and in Kent County, including Access of West Michigan, our local Kent County Health Department, among others, to develop a council where we can support local food policy council, or local food policy development and local food policy work. So, we see policy as a really important lever and mechanism by which we can help grow and support local food systems and local farmers, local eaters, local distributors, and the whole kind of local supply chain here in Kent County in West Michigan. So, we're still working to get that established. We've been working with Emergency Needs Task, or Essential Needs Task Force in United Way to actually embed the Food Policy Council within that work. So, we're kind of making sure that we're aligning with the current food, nutrition, and that type of work that's happening in Kent County already. So, with that, I will pass it back over to Erin, but thank you for your time to talk more about community food systems.
Great, Erin. So, another way that we support community food systems is through our Product Center. Now, last year, I brought in a Product Center client herself. She talked about cookies. She was the cookie woman, not to be in competition over here with Commissioner Woodin. We have innovation counselors at MSU Extension that support local entrepreneurs. So, we do that through counseling sessions. And in 2018, we did 344 counseling sessions with these local entrepreneurs. And we also host an annual conference called Making It in Michigan. So, how we exemplify that here in Kent County, has anyone been to the Bridge Street Market that opened last April? Oh, I got a few people. We were instrumental in helping that market get set up and connected with local clients. So, Ken Behr, their manager, emailed me and said that we were an important part of sourcing their local products during the inception of the Bridge Street Market, and that we continue to help them identify and connect with local vendors. So, we think that's important because building the products here in Michigan and selling them here to our county residents helps boost our economy. That's a picture of one of our clients, Brian Mosby, with his daughter, and they are selling their Mosby popcorn, and that's them down at the Bridge Street Market. And from what I hear from the manager, that product is thriving. So, what we're probably most known for is our work with youth development. Here is one of our 4Hers on the right showing her science project from last summer. We had over 3,400 youth participating in our 4H program. We do this now in many ways. So, most people think 4H and immediately think of bringing an animal to fair. So, if your brain popped into that category, you are not alone. I spend a lot of meetings undoing that myth. We are trying to grow our program in another way through what we call special interest clubs, and those are short-term clubs that any youth can be involved in. And we form the club around the interests of the youth. Our two most popular right now are Adulting 101 for teenagers who are just about to go to college or just about to graduate high school and need to know the next steps. We also have a very popular one called How to Survive a Zombie Apocalypse. That's for fourth and fifth graders. Really, it's just an outdoor adventure club where they get to learn different survival techniques in the wilderness. We do continue with our traditional club model. We have over 100 clubs in Kent County, and in 2018, we had two winners, state award winners, Shannon Good through Dairy Sciences. She won the Senior 4H State Award, and Haley Lowfilm through Healthy Lifestyles. She won the Junior 4H State Award. So, we're really proud of them. This just shows the talent and the skill and the capacity that these youth build through the 4H program. And lastly, because I know we're out of time, I just want to really quickly talk about the diverse health programs that we offer. One of them is our social and emotional health classes. Mental health is listed as the number one issue in Kent County, and that's not unique here. That's statewide. And so, we're trying to tackle that, along with many other organizations, from a different perspective. We served 700 Kent County residents at 27 different locations throughout the county. So, and we did that in two different languages, both in Spanish and in English. So, that's removing two barriers. One, we bring the classes to you where you are geographically. And two, we're trying to make sure that we have the service offered in multiple languages. Hopefully, people will seek out those preventative services. And then, lastly, we served over 3,000 people with our nutrition education, and we had about 300 people take our financial literacy classes. That's everything from how to pay back your student loans, homeownership education, how to simply create a budget and have an emergency fund.
Thank you, Erin. Great presentation, and it is amazing how much you guys do. Questions for Erin today. Commissioner Woodin.
For starters, I can't believe I forgot to press my button. For starters, thanks for coming, Erin. You are not wrong. A lot of the times when I'm reading this, hearing your report, I was saying the same thing to myself. I didn't know MSU Extension did that. I had a quick question about the community food systems. When it comes to CSAs, do we know if individuals can use SNAP benefits to purchase shares of CSAs?
Yeah. Actually, that's one of the things we've really put a focus on is food access and using CSAs as a mechanism for food access. So, it is possible for you to buy a CSA share with SNAP benefits, but it's not easy.
Okay.
So, with SNAP, you, the way it's set up, the way CSAs are set up is you pay for the CSA share upfront. So, before you actually get the food, you're paying for that CSA share. And with SNAP, you can't, you have to use the benefits within, I think, two weeks of when you're actually receiving the food. So, it's really up to the farmer to take on that more of a risk to say, "Okay, I'm going to enroll you in my CSA, and then I'm going to, like, accept your SNAP benefits on every other week," or in conjunction with double a food buck as well. We've had some farmers do that. There's also some holdups with that as far as farmers aren't necessarily allowed to accept SNAP benefits as a vendor unless they're at a farmer's market that accepts SNAP benefits.
Okay.
So, if you're doing pickup on your farm and you don't have that equipment set up, then that kind of limits you. So, we're actually trying to work with USDA on some of those issues around how SNAP benefits are allocated and trying to make it easier for that to be accepted for CSA.
Absolutely. Phenomenal. Thank you. And then, the other question I had was when it comes to financial literacy, has the MSU Extension, are they certified to be a homebuyer education system that helps with the conservative prerequisite to either MISTDA, down payment assistance, or the Grand Rapids City Down Payment Assistance? Thank you.
We are seeing that people reaching out to us less and less right now, just because there's not the homes to buy in Grand Rapids or in Kent County, but we are still doing that.
Phenomenal. Lastly, just Go Green.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So, what the Extension does is extensive, but when most people hear the name, they think of agriculture. Michigan State is a land-grant college. I had an opportunity to visit another one south of the border that love the colors scarlet and gray. The thing that struck me when I toured their agricultural facility is they said, "You know, we compete on the field day in and day out, and there's a lot of fun poked each ways." But when he spoke to me, it said, "You know, one of the most important things are the partnerships we do with other Big Ten schools." And he mentioned U of MSU. What is the reach of the MSU University with the Extension? And I know the Extension is this area. What other partnerships are they doing with other educational facilities in the Great Lakes region, Big Ten, to bring in new innovative ideas here and share our ideas with them?
Extension, and I'm not sure if everyone knows this, we are located in 83 different counties in Michigan. So, that really gives us this unique way to compare lessons learned or best practices throughout every county in the state. With regards to partnering with other states, Extension is a national system. So, for one particular example is our C grant. That's a University of Michigan, Michigan State Extension Program that's federally funded. We serve the area. That's a lot of the water programs that we develop are developed in conjunction with those, with both universities. We are consistently trying to build, I'm sorry, that's my microphone, partnerships with Grand Valley. We have some research being co-conducted with Grand Valley State right now, I think locally. It's just a continually growing project here in Kent, but with other states, we have multiple programs that we run through MSU Extension, not specific to Kent County.
Thank you.
Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I would be remiss if I did not point out to everyone that the lovely Mosby family there, our Kentwood residents, so that's pretty exciting to see somebody that I knew right there. But my second question is the 4H, and again, I grew up in a very urban area. Are they easy to find, Erin? I mean, are you going into, what does it come to mind? Lowell, or sometimes the Rockford, the Wayland, you know, they more out, because I'm still thinking animals.
Yep.
Where might someone, say from Kentwood, find a 4H group to be long to?
So, the way that 4H works is through a volunteer model. So, we only have three 4H program coordinators that reach that 3,400 number.
Wow.
The way they do it is they recruit and train leaders and volunteers, and we vet them very carefully because, you know, they're working with children. And then, they, we say, "You know, if you have a leader that's passionate about a subject, we will find the kids." So, then we can say, "Okay, that person lives in Kentwood. Let's recruit in Kentwood."
Okay.
And so, we go, a lot of the requests we get for 4H are for structured after-school programs.
Okay.
There seems to be a lack of that right now, and schools are really desperate to make sure they have structure in their after-school programs. So, we're getting quite a few requests for that.
Right.
However, if you have groups interested, send them my way, and we'll get them set up.
You will. Okay, great. That's, that's my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just sent something the other day, and I thought just bringing it up was kind of comical, but we're talking about the importance of educating people about agriculture and all things, whether it's a plant-based or farm animals or whatever. I guess as a resident carnivore here, I read this, it was in a San Francisco paper. It was by a student who didn't quite understand the process. And she wrote a letter to the paper editorial piece, and the quote is, "To all hunters who kill animals for food, shame on you. You ought to go to the store and buy the meat that was made there where no animals are harmed." And that was, that was actually, it was vetted, and that was an actual letter. So, we need to continue to educate because she will probably be teaching her kids that someday unless somebody tells her. But anyhow, I love the work that you do. I've been following you for the last 10 years and stuff, and it's really important. A lot of people don't know what you do, but I know how important it is, and everything from soil samples for people that are trying to improve their properties and everything else. Appreciate all the testing you provide, and it's done in a fairly quick and efficient manner, which is nice. So, thank you.
Do it ag in the classroom. We hope that that mitigates some of those comments about where our food comes from.
Any other questions for Erin today? Oh, Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. What is the nature of your relationship with Jubilee Jobs?
We host 4H clubs there. So, we, they're just a partner. At this point, we did a series of financial literacy classes for youth with them.
And that's at the, is that at Baxter, then?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not very agricultural.
No. Yeah, that's actually one of the myths that I appreciate busting, is that we aren't just agricultural-focused. We have a very big and growing urban footprint as well.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Erin. We really appreciate your presentation today. We are getting a little feedback on the mics, so please make sure your mics are turned off if you're not using them. On to item six, public comment related to our agenda today. Any public comment? All right, seeing none. We are on to item seven, Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Breebie.
Thank you, Chair. I moved the consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Breebie.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions, comments on items A, B, or C under item seven of the agenda today. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Chair.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Voorhees.
That's what we're about, that might be.
Kalman.
Yes.
Breebie.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item eight, Resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Melton for Resolution A. Motion?
Thank you, Chair. I move for Resolution 6271953, about the vacancies on the Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Moved by Commissioner Melton, support by-
Support.
Commissioner Sparks. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I'd like to move for this to be a roll call vote due to my day job. I'm going to have to abstain because of the potential conflict with the fire commission appointees.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate the process. I think we chose two really good qualified candidates. I'm very happy. I know them both just through, you know, my last 10 years here, I got to know them, and they're fantastic. And the process that came to this, our selection process for these board seats, and that was a lot to do with Diane Jones when she was chairing that board. It's a great process. I think we got the best possible quality candidates on there now through our selection process, and I'm just very pleased with these two. I think it's going to help us quite a bit, and I'm looking forward to the future.
Great. Any other, Commissioner Stuck?
Just to clarify, the motion is to approve appointments to both, to two boards.
You want to mention the-
Yes, it includes the Community Corrections Advisory Board, where the recommendation is Laura Joyce, and the Fire Commission, where the recommendation is James Morris and Julia Succi.
Great. Questions, other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we have been requested for a roll call, so I will call in the clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 6271953, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Kalman.
Yes.
Breebie.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yeas, one abstention, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 6271953 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner All right, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution six twenty-seven nineteen fifty-four, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Kalman.
Yes.
Breebie.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution six twenty-seven nineteen fifty-four is adopted.
Thank you Madam Clerk. I'll call on Commissioner Voorhees for eight-C.
Thank you Madam Chair. It's my privilege to introduce and call for the adoption of resolution number fifty-five of today's date, which is the funding appropriation in the Parks Department for Chief Hazy Cloud Park Land Acquisition.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions, comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none. This is another roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution six twenty-seven nineteen fifty-five, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Kalman.
Yes.
Breebie.
Yes.
Salfeld. Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution six twenty-seven nineteen fifty-four is adopted.
Thank you Madam Clerk. I'll call on Commissioner Voorhees for eight-C.
Thank you Madam Chair. It's my privilege to introduce and call for the adoption of resolution number fifty-five of today's date, which is the funding appropriation in the Parks Department for Chief Hazy Cloud Park Land Acquisition.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions, comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none. This is another roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution six twenty-seven nineteen fifty-five, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Kalman.
Yes.
Breebie.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution six twenty-seven nineteen fifty-five is adopted.
Thank you Madam Clerk. We are on to sub-D of item eight on our agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you Madam Chair. I'd like to move a resolution of today's date for Sheriff's Training Facility Project Appropriation for the Sheriff's Office.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions, comments on this issue? Commissioner Wooden?
Just a note of commendation, since she chairs the Finance Committee, she wasn't able to make the motion in committee, but I know that Commissioner Jones worked very hard on this, and just want to thank her for that, and thank the sheriff for getting this together so that residents can get a little bit more peace and quiet during the training.
All right, any other questions or comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto sub-E, I will call on Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you Chair Bolter. I am pleased to move for the approval of motion six twenty-seven nineteen fifty-seven, which calls for the adoption of the strategic plan that we have worked on over the course of this year.
Moved by Commissioner Stuck, support by Commissioner Melton. Questions, comments, concerns? We do have a representative from PSC here. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wooden, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you Madam Chair. I was wondering, did this go through any of our standing committees? Did it go through LHR or executive prior to coming to the full commission?
Remember, we had several work sessions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Conducted.
Yeah.
With the full board, this was an unusual circumstance. We wanted to make sure the full board entertained this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We have Maggie Plone and Justin Fast. Did you guys want to come speak to this, or are you good? Okay. Commissioner Talon?
Thank you Chair. Just had a few minutes to breeze through the actual final document, and I'm, I still remember all the mention by citizens and by some commissioners about land use planning, land use issues. And I'm looking through this three or four times quickly, looking for where that is in this plan, and I can't find it. So, any direction there would be appreciated.
Great. Maggie?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for having us here today. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to work on this plan with you. It's been wonderful to spend time with both your residents and with all of you in developing this plan. I'll quickly breeze through it, and then I'll highlight where we felt like that belonged. And I don't know if it's explicitly called out, I can't remember, but if not, I will talk about where we spent a lot of time talking about where that should be housed. Because you're right, that was something we heard from citizens and residents here that they were interested in. So, you have the plan in front of you. I won't walk through all of the plan again, but again, we heard from a lot of people, from not only you, but other elected officials within the county, the judges, community partners, business leaders, and most certainly, we heard from a lot of residents. We brought this plan to you a month ago, and put it out for public comment as a draft plan. We received maybe a dozen comments back on the plan, nothing, no substantial changes were made, so what you saw a month ago is what you're seeing before you today. I will move quickly through some of these, because we've talked about these quite a bit, but I will talk about the process again. Over twenty unique engagement processes that we had. Some of you participated in those community sessions. Two, community-wide surveys, both in English and in Spanish. Three, community listening sessions in Grand Rapids, Kentwood, and, I lost just one more. Thank you. And more than three hundred community members shared their thoughts and visions. It was an iterative process. We went through many different, as you know, many different narratives around the vision, mission, priorities, and goals. And so what's before you today is definitely, represents the community voices that we heard. Values, these were developed, you've seen these, vision again, nothing's changed within the vision from what we brought to you just a month ago. Same with the mission. So, there's five priorities, economic prosperity, high quality of life, excellence in service delivery, inclusive participation, and effective communications. To answer your question, most certainly, under economic prosperity and within a high quality of life, would those land planning issues arise within? And I think we actually mention it within the narrative around economic prosperity within the plan. I'm not going to walk through these, you've seen these, but again, economic prosperity, a high quality of life. Trying to read here on my form, which one of these housed it explicitly, but around strategic growth, most certainly, is where we thought that land planning lived and encompassed that, under high quality of life. Excellence in service delivery, inclusive participation, and effective communications. And I will say that as we spoke with the community, probably the most surprising thing was that community members weren't, while they had criticisms of government, as most governments experience, what we've heard over and over and over again is they just didn't know what the county did, right? That they couldn't tell us what they thought the county should be doing better, because they weren't sure what services belonged to the county, what services belonged to the city, or township, or other local unit of government. And so, we heard that from you as well, that you wanted more tools in order to be better communicators with your residents, and so, effective communications, well, listed here fifth, most certainly, that was something that we heard over and over again as a theme around things that your residents, your constituents were looking for. With that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Commissioner Talon, do you feel that addresses your question?
I appreciate the follow-up. I guess I'm just baffled and a little bit amazed that what we heard so often and so prevalently from members of the community about land use planning, about land conservation, preservation, that that's not called out specifically in here. It, I look in the quality, high quality of life and the prosperity sections, and I just don't see where that is specifically mentioned there, and it's baffling to me why it wouldn't be given the emphasis that we heard from the community.
Yeah. Wayman?
I can speak to that a little bit. Hopefully, this goes back to the multiple conversations that we had to make sure that we covered all of the ground that was being placed in this bucket. If you look at economic prosperity, the goal position the county for multi-generational economic and population growth, that particular one had a lot to do with the comments that we heard. What we tried to do as we landed on these broad statements was to give room to the multiple issues that were brought up around the population growth, land planning, and so forth. We also heard from the board, please be careful not to step into areas in which we know that our local communities also have a responsibility for. So, we wanted to make sure we did not excite nor negate ownership from that by our partner villages, townships, other municipalities. So, we wanted to do that, but let me tell you, Commissioner Talon, it is on the radar for us to then take these as departments develop their strategic goals and identify their tactics and objectives, to in fact, deal with the issues that you bring up that we heard from the community. So, that's the task that departments now will have, whether that be the Parks Department, whether that be facilities, whether it be administration, we have that responsibility to dig into the specific issues more granularly, to define what we might do to connect back to these broad statements. So, that's my explanation. I don't know if you want to add to that, but that's where I felt I heard.
Okay. I'm, I, it jumps out to me first on page nineteen, strategic growth. That's where I would see it would be housed. But, you're right, it's not, yeah, under high quality of life, I'm sorry. On page nineteen, we have strategic growth here. So, for me, that's broad enough that it, it's, we will be strategic in how we will support the growth of the county, and we also discuss the eight hundred and sixty-four square miles of supporting the growth and ensuring, you know, resources are there. But, you're right, it's not specifically calling out.
Land.
Specific words. So, Commissioner Antor?
Thank you Madam Chair. I agree that land use is critical, no matter where you look around the country. We've got countless examples of people that didn't look out very far, and I brought it up, not in jest, but out of me, I think we need to look out further than one or two years. We need to literally look out fifty years. And people snicker at that, but it doesn't take long for that to get away from you. And I know it's going to be important, I know it's not specifically, it's implied in here, which is good. I appreciate the fact that we all had an opportunity, had several meetings, to voice our concerns, and I kind of chuckled at some of it, because we were parsing out individual words. Sometimes we'd be going on for about five or ten minutes about a word, and wordsmithing sentences to death, but it's because it's really important about how it goes down on paper, because this is our mission statement. But, I concur that I think land use, at the end of the day, is one of the most important things we have. There's always so much dirt in this county, and what we do with it is critical, on how we're going to proceed in the future. And again, I could cite chapter and verse of cities that are similar to us, and the counties that did not have a plan, and they're paying horrible prices for it. So, I just want to point that out, and I appreciate Jim's mentioning that, but I'm assuming it's implied in here, and we'll always work looking towards the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you Chair. I just want to take a moment to recognize our leadership that took this on. This was not an easy lift, this was a lot of time, this was a lot of effort, and the end product, I think, is really well-done. And I, for those watching at home, I want to take just a minute to give an example of that. So, when I sit here, I look at our County of Kent mission statement. It's been here for the last five years. It said, "The mission of Kent County Government is to be an effective and efficient steward in delivering quality services for our diverse community. Our priority is to provide mandated services, which may be enhanced and supplemented by additional services, to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens within the constraints of sound fiscal policy." That's what we had, and it was good, and it worked for a long time. I believe now we've moved to great, and our new mission is, if this passes, through responsible budgeting and thoughtful planning, Kent County Government is committed to providing resources and services that promote a high quality of life for the entire community. And I just think that every minute we spent planning on this, working on this, working with the consultants, was time well-spent. Because I believe this, along with our budget process, along with what we do in legislative, really leads us into the future. And I think it's going to be a phenomenal future with a lot of planning and a lot of thought. And with that, it goes back to our selection to have Wayman Britt as our administrator. And I believe this is a great connection to why that decision was made, why we have him at the helm, and this is one of the products of that connection. And I just want to connect those dots, because I think it's very important. The question that I had is if this has, has like an end date? Is this a five-year plan? Is this a ten-year plan? And so, you know, I know we need to do what we can to make sure that we meet the mission statement, but I'm just thankful we don't get too deep in the weeds of zoning. And that's my concern.
Thank you, Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioner Skaggs.
I just wanted to echo Commissioner Jones and thank everyone that was involved in this process. I think that this went remarkably well and appreciate the vision of Chair Bolter and former Chair Saulfeld to put this together and to really give some serious thought into where we want to go. As Commissioner Jones mentioned, we're in a new era, the Wayman Britt era. And I think we all hope that what we've done so far and the strategic plan is going to move us in a very positive direction. Also want to echo Commissioners Antor and Talon on the importance within the constraints that Commissioner Voorhees mentioned of the Michigan Constitution and the importance of local governments to really work, to really take this issue of strategic growth very seriously and move with our local government partners to try to make sure that I think some of the cautionary tales that have happened in other places, which I think is what Commissioner Antor is alluding to, don't happen here and that we are able to keep some of the uniqueness of Kent County with a clear and thriving downtown, thriving central city, surrounding cities, suburb townships and exurb and rural farming townships as sort of an ideal system of growth as this county moves forward. I mean, we've seen growth of five, six, seven thousand a year. We need to do that fifty-year look ahead and make sure that we're taking full advantage of those economic growth opportunities without letting them get out of hand. My question, and I think Wayman mentioned it a little bit in the previous discussion, is just can you go over the broad next steps that staff is going to take now that we've got this in hand?
Sure. The county placed a position in its budget this past year. We took a position that the Assistant Administrator was fulfilling and we created a strategic performance management position, which will take this plan and fully engage the county staff, the departments, the elected officials to align with this plan. Once we have completed that process, it will be a more visible, front-facing plan with the public on our website. We will also take this plan and share it back with the various stakeholders that participated in our process. They will have that. There will be a press release today that will go out to the community regarding the plan. And we will continue to, on a quarterly basis, look at this plan to make sure that we're hitting the numbers. We will also have a dashboard that will be identified to front-load the key metrics that we want to showcase that tie back to what you all have identified. So all of that is in motion today. A lot of time has been spent. We have the performance management team that's in play. Several department leaders are involved with that process, along with Mary Beth Fantil. And they will continue to push this forward. And then at the end of the year, we will take a look back and say, how did we do? And we'll put that in front of you, similar to what we did this past year with Chair Bolter, where we'll talk about, here's what happened last year, here's what we think we need to do this year. So we'll have time in February to again look at the plan. What do we move? How do we do? And keep that ongoing dialogue about the plan, how effective we'd be. And then the other part of this is the performance management review process. You'll have an opportunity through the Legislative Human Resources Committee to gain insight about how effective we are in implementing the priorities that you've set. So you have an opportunity to engage dialogue with the various departments that are focused on the various initiatives, strategies to implement the plan.
Great. Thank you, Wayman. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Bokowski.
Thank you, Chair. I too want to commend the results. I mean, this is a, I'll just say, it's a great improvement from our last strategic plan. And I do believe it is a guiding opportunity. Thank you for the answer on its shelf life because that too, you know, when do we get to revisit the goals and things like that? Just add my two cents to the comments made by Commissioner Talon, Antor, and others. My only edit would be that I think we should go out a hundred years because fifty years from now, some of us will still be alive and we might feel some opportunities, but a hundred years from now, I'm pretty sure I'm gone. I don't know about, yeah.
Whoa.
No, don't worry. It's all good. It's all good. No. So that being said, you know, if we remember back in January when there was, before the snow came, we had conversations about the Fire Commission. And we had, some of us would say, some blood pressure went up about, is there still a county role for the Fire Commission? And we voted it through, yes, there is. Because truly, our hallmark, one of our hallmarks is collaboration. And so when we start talking about, you know, land use planning and all of that, I totally agree, as Commissioner Skaggs mentioned, that the Michigan Constitution is pretty clear on home rule and all that stuff. However, how do we really work together and talk together about stuff which has awesome impacts on each other? It's not a secret, you know, but most of us don't read these things that get published. But there is a medical marijuana facility being built on Plainfield, about twenty feet from Plainfield Township and about thirty feet from Grand Rapids Township. I don't know if Grand Rapids, yeah, I mean, it's right, I don't know if Grand Rapids talked to those neighboring communities and said, hey, does this, I mean, it's in Grand Rapids, but does it matter to you? I don't know what those other communities voted yes or no for medical marijuana. But again, that has an impact on these other communities. And again, I'm not exaggerating. It's across the street from these other municipalities. So how are we really working together? I don't want to get into quality of your neighborhoods. I mean, I'm not going that minute, but still, bigger projects, especially impacts on roads, all of that stuff. So there is this opportunity for land use collaboration. I'll leave it there. When we get back at this in three to five years, I don't know if I'll be here or if I'll speak as a public member, I still feel there's a little way too much about economic as opposed to equitable economic growth. You know, we, our vision is we want to be the economic engine of West Michigan. I think we just want to be the engine of West Michigan. That includes cultural, economic, and everything else. Not going to ask for any edits at this moment, but just to make that statement, there's more, there's more to life than making money. Not saying it's not important, it's just a little more to it than having that enshrined. So thank you for this great work.
Any question in there or no?
Just comment.
Just asking.
Just comment. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo many of the previous comments and to the point that's been raised around land use. Certainly had I been drafting this myself, I probably would have called out a supporting role in land use as an actual goal. But I also do believe that this document, since it goes beyond this term, is even itself a living document. And it is up to the commission to interpret things like strategic growth and multi-generational economic growth. And to me, that suggests playing a supportive but not micro-management role in land use on the regional issues that have been mentioned previously. And so as we go out in enacting this strategic plan, which I do believe will pass, I just want to make sure that that note is made and echo the concerns for forethought when it comes to land use that have been made by previous commissioners. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am as well sensitive to the issues raised by some of my fellow commissioners about what details are not in here. But by very definition, a strategic plan is a forty-thousand-foot document. And it is up to us to breathe those details into it over time. So do I see in this enough specificity on some of the issues that are important to me? No, probably not. I would like to see more specificity. And I'm sure everyone around the table has a similar kind of comment. But to the extent that it addresses what we identify as sort of those key visions and directions that we want to go and be sensitive to, I think it does a very good job of that. And I will leave it up to Commissioner Talon because I'm sure he's not going to drop that issue and others as time goes on to continue to put that into the discussions about what do we mean by this. And that's what it's intended to do. So I think it's a great document.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I think a good summary of all of this is truly on the last page. And I think sometimes last pages are more important often than the first page. In very big, bold letters, "We will be transparent and clear in the communication and decisions of the county." If we truly stick to that, each and every one of us, not only here in our commission board, but when we are out on other boards that we're in, when we're out in our communities, when we are out talking with people, because that is something that you said, people, what do they do at the county level? I didn't really know very well before I ran for my first stint as county commissioner. I've learned a lot, obviously. Transparent and clear. We already had something going on in Kentwood. They're closing the Kentwood Recycling Center. It was not necessarily transparent and clear, but we have made amends for that. And I have many persons that have come back. They don't like the answer that they've gotten, but they have been so grateful for transparent and clear communication. So truly, if we stick to page twenty-five, and we will be transparent and clear in our communications among ourselves, with our administrators, with the hard work of those that we hire to come and help us and our constituents, I can't help but think that our next however many years are going to be very successful.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate an opportunity to add my thanks and appreciation for the process. I have been through this quite a few times over the years and always dreamed of a process like this with the kind of document, working document, and outcomes and dashboards that are associated with that. So I should have led with that and I apologize for not, but want to add my appreciation. When this started, I, one of the things I really appreciated was the citizen engagement piece. I also recognized early on that that process is fraught with danger. When we ask people what they think and then don't necessarily respond to that, we lose credibility in the long term, I think. And so for me, I was watching that and very concerned about that. And I want to acknowledge that one of the pieces, the two big pieces that I heard in the session that I went to and in some of the data that we received were the inclusive participation and being a county that is there for everyone in the community. And I see that deeply incorporated and embedded in this. So I'm very appreciative of that. But then the land use piece, I'm concerned about not incorporating that in a very definitive way and the potential effect that that has in the future on how citizens feel they're being heard or not heard. So I just, again, I really appreciate this and just kind of call out that concern that we have to be very careful when we ask people what they think to actually listen and then incorporate that. So thank you for all this work and I look forward to implementing it.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for your work. And it's a beautiful strategic plan, a great presentation. So I just want to let you know, I appreciate all the work you put in, all the work our administrator, Wayman Britt, put in, and the staff. And I just want to agree with Jim, one thing I wanted to say, that the process gave the community a chance to be involved. It gave us commissioners a multiple chances to be involved. And I just appreciate being a part of that process and want to thank everybody for their work.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I do appreciate the strategic plan and the input that all of us were allowed. I also want to support some of the other comments that were made today. It is on page eleven, but the only direct reference is the community members' interest in land use planning. And I think if I would have one regret with this, it is that we didn't, other than that, there is no other direct reference to agriculture as a business or to the land use, that that is the only time at which it was directly mentioned. Everything else is going to have to become a reference in terms of high quality of life or whatever that means. And it's really interesting to see that both of our special orders of business today really did concern land use. I mean, here's the Kent Conservation District, show your support for healthy land, mark your 2019 calendars. So you have the broad goals and then you have the specific ways in which you will carry them through. And, but it's interesting how much we, emphasis we put on this in our, and I would like, I would like it to have been more directly supported in this plan through some other mention. The other, the other thing I'll mention is we spent more than a year doing an agricultural business development plan, having a special committee look at this whole area too. And I, so I do think that there were ways in which we might have, you know, added this whole emphasis on the use of the land and agriculture or land use as a business practice and that it would have tied in very, very well. But I like, I like this and it will be how we implement it that becomes important.
Great. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Seeing none, this is not a roll call vote. It was moved by Commissioners Steck, so Commissioner Melton. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item nine, public comment related to general county matters. Any public comment today? Come on up. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Julia Succi, nine seven six nine Sunset Ridge. I just want to thank the Chair, Chairwoman Bolter and the Board of Commissioners for my appointment to the Kent County Fire Commission. I look forward to being involved with the Fire Commission. As I want to thank Commissioner Hennessy, Commissioner Steck, and Commissioner Ponstein. And the interview process is very professional and very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the Fire Commission. All right. Any other public comment today? Seeing none, we are on to reports, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to report that the West Michigan Sports Commission did have the fifth third opening ceremonies for a very successful state games. And I was pleased and honored to attend, along with many other members of our community and an awful lot of visitors. I think that's a great event that continues to promote the mission of that heads and beds. And it was so evident to watch the opening ceremonies, it's very Olympic-like if you haven't attended. They actually had an Olympian make a presentation, but they also have in the athletes by sport in the fifth third ballpark, and it was really well done. Thanks.
Any other official reports today? All right. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Just to report that at Network 180, the, an individual has been nominated to serve as the CEO for 180. That individual, Mr. Bill Ward, is being made available for a public forum on Friday, what time is it? I think it's, in the afternoon. I was looking in my emails as we were springing my talk out too long. I'll have to get that later. But it is, it is a public forum, so if you are interested in meeting Mr. Ward and/or raising questions or hearing from him, you may attend that public forum.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Any other questions, comments, or, I'm sorry, reports, official reports? All right. Seeing none, we are on to Commissioner Miscellaneous. Commissioner Breeby.
I have two quick items. Thanks, Chair Bolter. The first item is, we have checked this afternoon, Community Health Advisory Committee. It starts at noon at the Health Department. And I would invite all of you to attend. We're going to hear from some of our new employees at Check, or new employees at the Health Department. One from the animal shelter and then another sanitarium, I believe. I'll have to double check that. But the second thing I want to mention is just to congratulate the South Christian Women's Soccer Team. They won the state championship. And just an interesting fact, they had their last nine games, they held their opponents scoreless, and that includes all seven of the games from the state tournament. So pretty strong team. Twelve seniors are graduating, so we'll see what happens next year.
Commissioner Bokowski.
Thank you, Chair. Real quick, a couple items. I gave you the postcard. I don't know how I put this on the TV screen. But our annual Americans with Disability Act celebration is in two weeks, July 10th, out at the Kentwood branch of the Kent District Library. Have an awesome partnership with KDL. Great to be out in Kentwood again. Awesome facility. Many of you have attended. Love to see you all there. I'm wearing my less-than-traditional tie today because I grabbed my only school board swag, Michigan Association of School Boards, in honor of Teresa Weather O'Neill, who is retiring as Grand Rapids Superintendent. I've known her for a long time. She's just been fantastic for our community, you know? Yeah, the health of Grand Rapids Public Schools has a lot to do with our county. And through her leadership for, again, many years, only seven or eight as superintendent, is helping our county get stronger. So I just, massive thanks to her for her work and commitment to our community, our children, and all of that. And last but not least, Pam did forward you the most recent report on the Council on Future Mobility. When Steve Warren from the Road Commission was here, we talked a little bit about autonomous vehicles. I am on that council, appointed by a Republican governor. And we're actually meeting in Grand Rapids on July 19th. So I'll get those details to you. And if you're available that Friday, I think I can get you an invite to the meeting. At least I hope I can, so.
Pull some strings.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just seems like two days ago I spoke a lot of Miscellaneous and that hasn't changed. In two days, a lot happens. But it was mentioned about the Kentwood Recycling. I too, as a county commissioner. Even though that is not in my district, I take calls from anyone within the county seriously. Yes, a lot of people aren't happy with the answer that they got. It's something that we do have to work at because the longer I talk to the people who called me, one of the common factors were, when they were told, you know, you can get your own recycling bin in front of your house, most of these people lived in apartments and that option isn't available. So just going forward, you know, it's something, if we are going to take recycling seriously, that's one area that may, may need a little help. It was mentioned this morning about, in the CIP, about the aquarium improvements. Penguins came up. One of the things I like to do, kind of get away from the daily grind, is take a walk in the zoo. And that's getting a little tougher to walk in peace without being noticed. And I kind of got an enhanced tour the last time I was in. And the reason I bring it up, we stopped at the Penguin exhibit and I was told that, like no place out in the world, the penguins we have, they have got the highest captivity birth rate of any accredited zoo, which hats off to the zoo. What they are looking at is because of their success, there's another type of penguin that doesn't have that success rate. And the opportunity to bring that colony to the zoo to see what magic we can do. I don't know if there's magic to breeding, but we're doing something right there. So my hats off to the zoo.
I'm a nurse, Dan. I can help you.
Okay. We can talk later. Another thing came up on my, one of my social media feeds and hats off to the Sheriff's Department on this. It's a program called the Pink Patch Program. And you can now purchase a Kent County Sheriff's Patch that's highlighted in pink. The patches are $10. The money goes to the Kent County Sheriff's Brevement Fund. It also helps Gilda's Club dealing with breast cancer. helps Gilda's Club dealing with breast cancer. So, really appreciate the efforts, the patches look really nice and they're available at the Sheriff's Department along with a couple other locations. I did have the opportunity a couple weeks ago, or maybe a week and a half, to go to Camp Grayling. I wanted to thank Colonel Hollenreich and his staff for the invite there, it's not every day you get to eat lunch at an officer's club, not that it's anything like sickness or anything. But it gave us a look of what Camp Grayling means to this state and, you know, our country as a whole. 174,000 acres covering five different counties. It's one of the premier training sites, they get people from across the world, Japan, Australia, Puerto Rico's come up. And it's more than just training, they've got a big emphasis on emergency management. I want to assure everyone that everyone at Camp Grayling knows where Kent County is, seeing they did a exercise called Northern Strike where the country of the United States was hit with a nuclear bomb, the county they chose was Kent, so for a day they talked about Kent County. So, just wanted to pass along that it's more than just military training, it's a great economic impact, not only to the Grayling area, but the whole state of Michigan. The issue of PFAS did come up, that's an issue for a lot of counties across the state. Yes, the Department of Defense knows it a problem, yes, they know that a lot of their airports have this, but they do have a plan and what they're finding out is what we found out here. This is a huge issue when it infiltrates any type of water system, that's one of the toughest things to clean up. They are working on it, they are taking it serious and I think in the next year or so you'll see steps being taken to try to clean up a lot of this. At that same visit, the MAC Board of Directors met, we passed our legislative priorities. I want to thank Commissioners Tyson and Talon who also sit on committees.
Sparks.
Sparks. Well, I saw your sisters just the other day.
They kind of look alike.
They do.
Like exactly alike.
They're twins.
And Monica tells me how to keep them, but yeah, I don't know. So, we have all these standing committees that come up with the priorities for MAC. The one that we did leave out and will be approved at a future meeting is the transportation priorities. It is a difficult issue, especially when you've got 83 diverse counties, the battle lines are being drawn between the counties above the knuckle and southeast Michigan when it comes to that road funding issue. MAC didn't want to take a position on it because we want to remain at the table so we can represent all 83 and try to find some type of solution. There's a tough issue, there's six transportation funding things that have been dropped and more are going to be coming on how to fix our roads, so stay attention, MAC's position is that we want to stay at the table. Other things that are in front of the legislature that might be of interest, besides the road funding, is that the dark stores issue is still out there. We thought there'd be a window to try to address that this year, I don't know if it's going to happen by just the way it's been assigned and the person that's assigned to oversee that. However, on the good news, I think all nine planets might have aligned, that we have been successful to drop in both houses legislation to make county commissioner terms to four years. Now, I don't know if that's going to go anywhere because I know what the critics say is that if we give county commissioners four years, they're going to have a free shot at the representatives every two years. And my response to one of the representatives were, hey, I'd love to make the representatives four-year terms if we could just rework that whole term limit thing at the same time, and I just kind of got a dead stare, so. So there's a lot going on, I appreciate the work of all the county staff and, you know, we were highlighted in two reports, there's a lot county government does, there's a lot that people don't know that we do, and there's a lot of departments that do things beyond the daily duties of running county government. So I've always been appreciative of that and I'll leave it there.
Thank you Commissioner Ponstein, thanks for all your work on MAC, I know it's been time consuming but important. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you Chair, just a quick shout out to our Broadway Grand Rapids, because I took the time last night and spent my money to see Anastasia and thought it was worth every dime. I didn't see an empty seat in the house, so great for them for having a program that is impressive and brings Broadway without me flying to New York or going to Detroit or going to Lansing. I drove, you know, right downtown, I went to the event and I drove home and here I was promptly at 7:00 AM for the next meeting. But my point is, what a great setup and in their future horizon, they have Hamilton, they have The Lion King, it's just a great lineup too for next year, which I did decide to be a season ticket holder for next year as well. So, this year, they caught me for Anastasia because I couldn't miss it, I highly recommend if you are a Broadway fan, not to miss this one, to make the time. Thanks.
Commissioner Talon.
Thank you Chair, I don't know if my colleagues experience this, but as I go through life lately, I seem to be thinking more and more often, why is this happening to me? And one of those things happened last Thursday, after our, two weeks ago after our board meeting, when I participated in an event called Real Men Cook and Eat Healthy. The bizarre twist of that is that I don't cook and I don't eat healthy. But I do have a spouse who is a very good cook and somehow I ended up participating and she coached me. And in the most bizarre twist, I ended up winning the judged competition. The good news is that along with that, we had to pre-select a charity to which $1,000 would be donated and my charity was the Grand Rapids Area Coalition in Homelessness. So, $1,000 will be going to support that work of coordinating the efforts of getting folks from, who are experiencing homelessness from shelter into permanent housing. So, I appreciated that a few staff were there to show support and it was a very fun night.
Are you volunteering to cater our next evening event?
We would be in big trouble. Peanut butter chicken, I can do that.
Okay. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you Madam Chair, I know she's your favorite twin and that's okay. Get it. I didn't want to. I wanted to let everyone know about the apartment and condo recycling grant program that we do have, even though they are closing the recycling center. There's more information on the Kent County Department of Public Works and, let's see, so just go to that Kent County Department of Public Works and accesskent.com, so that's accesskent.com and you can find out more information. And it's literally like $4 to $6 a month and it's really trying to help us to retrain and help other people understand how to use recycling. So, just wanted to let you know about that program and let other people know about that program. We talk about that a lot out in Kentwood and Wyoming right now, so. Fourth of July is coming, hope you guys are going to be in the parades and celebrating. Thank you to all those who have given their lives to our country.
Thank you Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Bonk.
Yes, thank you. Thank you Commissioner Sparks for the plug for the DPW. We work on those kind of questions that Commissioner Ponstein mentioned, there's recycling available for apartment and they can get that from their carrier. It's a tough job, it's a tough business and there's not a lot of money in recycling, especially at this time, and we're trying to make it work on a limited budget. A lot of times at those recycling places we still have is up in Ten Mile, you get tires and your old TV sets and everything else that's non-recyclable and it's very expensive and it was very expensive to operate that Kentwood facility as other fellow commissioners who serve on the DPW know. So, talk to me anytime, talk to Dyer anytime, give him a call if you have questions concerning that. We're working on the Resource Recovery Park and that's going to be a big idea and that's going to be a 10-year idea. Commissioner Talon mentioned that we didn't talk about rural and land use, but part of that land use is taking care of our trash. And that's going to be a big project, a difficult project and it's going to be an expensive project and so we need everybody's support and help to keep this area green and to do that, it costs money. So, just a few comments as you woke me up to that. Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you for your work on that, Commissioner Bonk, Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'd like to ask the commission and the public to keep our district, the 17th district, in your prayers. In the last 10 days, we've had 10 shootings and those are the ones that are reported, there's been more shootings than that, but most of the ones where somebody's either hit, injured or the police has called are the ones reported in the news. The other night I woke up because I thought I heard somebody throwing rocks at a house, like, and it turns out to be a shooting on the next street over from my street where a 10-year-old was hit by gunfire. So, we're continuing to try to work on the violence, the police presence has turned up in our neighborhood to try to curb some of that violence, but even with all the police cars that were out yesterday, there was another shooting at Joe Taylor Park where a person was hit. So we're continuing to do what we can to work on that violence and we're trying to do some work with Silent Observer and get in contact with them so we can get a greater connectivity with the community and hopefully improve these police relationships with the community so some of that information can be given to the police or Silent Observer so some of these young men who are doing this shooting in what our neighborhood is calling a war can be apprehended and we can have peace back in our community. So once again, keep the 17th district in your prayers, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Milton.
Kind of hate to follow that one, I am so sorry. On a more fun note, all of you, I'm sure, probably, Commissioner Coleman could be our captain, we have something new in Kentwood and we have beach volleyball and we have three beach volleyball courts, I guess, I'm not a volleyball person, obviously, I'm too short, but very, very exciting, they had the ribbon cutting and they're looking for teams and so, you know, if we wanted to as a group of commissioners go out and play volleyball, I'm not sure what the proper attire is, but anyway, that was very, very exciting for Kentwood, they've been working on that for a really long time.
Great. Any other Commissioner Miscellaneous today? All right, I have a few items and I first want to, I feel like it should not be in Miscellaneous, but I want to acknowledge the family of Tracy Timmer and the loss of Tracy Timmer. She was a employee of ours, a family member of our Kent County family and she worked at the Health Department and her, she and her husband, to my understanding, were taking a trip to Alaska to view some land that they purchased for retirement and I am told she at least passed in a place that she loved. So, our thoughts and prayers are, of course, with the family and our team members at the Health Department who worked with her and, of course, Director London, so I wanted to mention that. There is a GoFundMe page for the family, I did post that, that's on my website, I think, several others, so just want to mention that. Okay, back to Miscellaneous. Few house cleaning or housekeeping items, I guess, I'll say DPW, I just wanted to remind you, there is a DPW facility tour on July 29th, they would like to know if you want to go by this Friday, if you could RSVP to that. Land use came up today, obviously a lot, I want to remind people, we did rattle through, you've gotten tons of calendar items, I want us to all feel like we're getting input, but we do have on August 8th, Matthew is going to be giving us an update of all the different land use, PDR, agribusiness reports that all occurred before most of us were here. He's going to be kind of giving us a deep dive on that and it's just a way for us to all be brought up to speed on all the work that's already happened, so we're not recreating the wheel and we can move forward on planning what we should be doing as a county and how we support that effort. So, I wanted to remind you of that. Okay, what else do I have? We do, I will plan on canceling our CIP for after today because I get consensus we didn't need it, so we won't be doing that work group today after board. And then lastly, I want to acknowledge all the work of PSC and our strategic plan and I think it was a fairly inclusive process, I appreciate everyone's input, your participation. It's just meant to kind of be a guideline, we do need to lay out those specific priorities, that's what we will continue to do as a board. I want to acknowledge Lori Latham for her work in getting that going and all the coordination that was involved and it was a lot of work. And then I'm really excited about this dashboard and we're going to be able to take our metrics and it will be online and all of the people that we serve in this community are going to be able to go online and see where we're, see our metrics. And I want to acknowledge Mary Beth Ventil for that work that she'll be doing, we really look forward to that, I think that's kind of bringing the county into the 20th, 21st century, so we're coming along slowly but surely. So with that, I will call on Commissioner Breeby for adjournment.
Thank you Chair, I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, July 25th at 8:30 AM for an official meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Breeby, support by Commissioner Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh yeah.